Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 21st, 2018 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from February 7th, 2018. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman and I move that we accept the minutes of February 7th, 2018. Is there into the record?
Second.
Move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and I will abstain since I wasn't here. All of that's, there's no requirement for that. So that's 4-0-1. Next up is record. That's on our agenda, and I understand from staff there are none tonight, which takes us to our consent agenda, and there's one item for AFP-7829-2018 Ferguson Residence, a 618 square foot house addition at 712 Chestertown Street in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. Are there any questions for staff on the consent agenda?
No.
Charming set of drawings, hand drawn.
Yes.
I like to see that once in a while. All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman and I move that we accept the consent. The AFP-7829-2018 is read in the record.
Second.
It's moved to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. And next up is the sign permit agenda. There was one scheduled for tonight, and I understand from staff that the applicant could not be here, and they are recommending that we move to defer to the next meeting. Is there a motion, please?
To defer?
To defer.
Mr. Chairman and I move that we defer sign application 15864-2018 to the final week, to the next meeting.
Second?
Second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And we probably should, I'm sorry to interrupt, but probably should specify just what the date of that meeting is for anybody that would be interested in.
Fair enough.
Probably.
So for the record, that-
It'd be the April 4th meeting.
Not March?
March.
We've got March 1st.
It's warm, I know.
March 7th. I apologize for that.
March 7th.
I would amend my-
I am skipping a whole month, yes.
I would amend my motion to say March 7th, 2018.
And I still say second.
And I believe we'll still get all ayes, so.
We still say aye.
Next up is the site plan agenda. We have one tonight for AFP-7794-2017 Yard House, 8,078 square foot restaurant at 211 Rio Boulevard in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. This is an amendment to final site plan, and presenting staff is Caroline Sidon. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening. Staff is before you tonight to present amendment to final site plan application AFP-7794-2017. It is located at 211 Rio Boulevard, which is right in the corner here at Washingtonian Boulevard to the south, and Rio Boulevard to the west of the building, and the Washingtonian Lake to the northeast. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing 7,755 square foot Macaroni Grill building to construct a new 8,078 square foot building for Yard House Restaurant. And you may recall that the Planning Commission approved an amendment to schematic development plan ASDP 7647-2017 for this project back in November 2017. It needed an amendment to schematic development plan for the change in the height of the building. This application comes before the Planning Commission in accordance with Section 24-172A, which requires the Planning Commission to grant amendments to approve final site plans. And it is also here because the applicant proposes more than one building sign on each of the building facades, and is requesting a sign adjustment related to Section 24-212C9. I'm going to introduce Jack DeGagne, who is here from Darden Restaurants, and I'm going to take it from there.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to see you again. Thank you for this beautiful weather up here.
Law for you.
You're welcome. One problem at all.
Again, thank you. I'm Jack DeGagne with Darden Restaurants, representing Yard House. I have Nicholas Beach here with us from Bowler Engineering. Dick can discuss in detail any of the site or engineering-related questions or concerns that, if you have any. And then I have Sean Smith with SES Site Enhancement Services, which is our signage expert here for the signage portion. Again, I just, as you know, we're taking down the existing Macaroni Grill for our new Yard House Restaurant. Very excited about it. I was out at the site today, walking around, and I basically just visioned our building there, and I went, "Oh, that's going to look nice." Just, you know, really excited right now because you got the Mac Grill that's closed, and then think, I'm not sure what was next to it, but.
Joe's Crab Shack?
Yes, and I believe it's-
Which is closed.
Which is closed. So I said, okay, from this scenario to a vibrant Yard House, I was like, yes, this is, it's going to fit very well there on that site with that lake there. Very excited about it. As probably I stated last time, it's modern, four-sided architecture with the use of, as far as with the materials. Oh, where's my notes there? There's a combination, and I do have a materials board here that I can pass around. Please hold it flat because one of the pieces keeps wanting to fall off, so.
Caroline, do you want to-
I can hold it.
Hold it, or maybe let the camera hit it for a couple of seconds, and then, I don't know which order you want to do these.
Camera.
If you want to start with that, or you want to do the overall elevations first, and then get to that, so folks can contact.
Yeah, just the overall elevations. It's kind of, you know, the use of blue and black brick, the welded wire mesh, the panels, aluminum panels, the porcelain tiles, and the EPAS, and solar bronze glazing on the windows. Just the combination of all those materials on the four different elevations, again, gives us that exciting, four-sided architecture. And I think that is really the key, as far as when you look at this building from all four sides, you know, the entrance side with the patio, here to my right, and then all four sides, plus with the signage, even the back area that is, you know, every restaurant has a back area, but with the use of the screening, because there is going to be movement, there are stairs in there, and, oh, yes, this area here. The idea is to be able to see the movement in there, to where it's not just the back of a restaurant that you hide. It's something to where we're providing activity back there with the stairs, and just a little bit of, I'll say, three-dimensional movement. And so there's, all four sides, you've just got, it's not plain. It's not plain.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The backside, currently, the front of the Macaroni Grill is looking at the parking lot. You're obviously proposing to make the focus point facing the lake or the pond. Where is this back going to face? Is that going to be facing the old entrance of the Macaroni Grill, the side of the Macaroni Grill? Where is that in position?
Okay.
It's in the back.
Yeah.
I believe it's facing the-
Our front door, the backside is, that you would call the backside with the dumpster area, or receiving and dumpster area, that would be the northwest side, which is, if I go, okay, which is, oh, I see, I got to use, there we go, this area here.
Okay.
And that would be related to, let me get back to the pictures. Oh, I'm going the wrong way.
It's better to use the arrow keys.
Oh. That would be this side back here. So this is your northwest, your northwest side. So from the close, from the Joe's Crab Shack that closed down, from that side-
That corner.
This is where you're looking at it, you know, kind of at a corner.
From Rio Boulevard.
As you come down.
The glass staircase is closest to the lake in that view, right?
In this view, yes. This glass, this staircase area right here is on that corner, that northwest corner. But then here's the patio area here, so you can, right around the corner, and then boom, you're right into the vibrant northeast elevation facing the lake, and all that vibrancy.
I have a quick question about the screening. So there's glass behind that?
No, sir, that is-
It's open?
It's open. It's open air, but the idea of the screening is to make it opaque, to where you can see movement behind it, but with the screening, it is frosted, so to speak?
Yeah, I think I may have asked that question last time. It's really interesting because on your sample, it just looks, they look like really big spaces, but-
Right.
When you look at it there, it looks really small.
It's a two-by-two here, but then when you put it on a big, huge wall, so to speak, in a much larger scale, then it takes effect. You're not going to get the same effect from a little sample.
Exactly.
There'll be a lot more of it than there is.
It would be a lot more.
Yeah.
Moto.
There's this photo here, but I don't think this does justice. This is just a sample of the material in reference, but it doesn't look the same compared to what we're going to be doing. And actually, the company that made it, I went and looked at it, and just, it was kind of funny. You know, some of the things that they were showing, like one was like a big, it's a wire mesh, right, that you can use on anything. And this one company showed me a picture of a chicken coop, and I said, "Well, I'm not going to show that at the meeting."
For a lot of reasons, you should.
Yeah, right. But it's just using this material in an architectural, a much nicer architectural format.
Thank you.
And then, let's see, so.
What might help, just because of the kind of the context and scope of what we review, maybe do a brief overview of the net impact to the footprint from the old restaurant building to this one, just kind of a general description, and the net change in building height, some of the constraints that have changed since the, over the existing building, just to give everybody a sense of context, if you will, please.
Okay.
You may not have an exhibit, so it's okay to show the site plan, and just kind of estimate where those changes are.
All right, let's see.
Am I going the right way?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to defer, site plan-wise, with the building and the old and the new, I'm going to defer to my illustrious civil engineer.
And if you need to queue something up, I know part of what we're reviewing tonight too is a sign. Barry, and so whatever, whatever you want to queue up for that, little walking man, the series, things like that.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Nick Beach. I'm with Bowler Engineering. I want to first start by thanking staff. You guys did a fantastic job, as always. We had a lot of particularities that we really wanted to stick with, and they did a wonderful job working with us, so I want to thank them. As far as the site plan is concerned, as you can see in the photo in front of you, the existing building kind of sits right on the corner of that lake. As you flip over, we're basically staying in the same area. We don't have the same footprint, but the buildings are very similar from a footprint standpoint.
Curved line, curved line's unaffected on the parking lot.
The curved line itself is staying, although we are modifying, there's a couple handicap parking spaces out front that you can see in this photo, that we are actually turning into a drop-off area, and we're updating the ADA spaces to the other side, making sure that ADA compliant area works for the entry. We also are changing, if you look down towards the side of the building, we added a couple motorcycle spaces. But overall, the sidewalks and the curve lines in the parking lot are staying. We do have a little bit of utility work out in the parking lot, just to the west of the front entrance by the ADA spaces, so that's why you'll see the LED bumped out over there. But overall, the parking lot's staying the same. The footprint is pretty much in the same spot. We're gaining a couple hundred square feet, but-
It was three-something in the report, but yeah.
Right.
About as two hundred.
Pretty small.
Three-twenty-three.
The biggest, the biggest change, I think, is the deck that's off the back to kind of activate the space in the lake. As mentioned in the staff report, we do have a whole harmless agreement with WSSC to build that over their easement, so we've worked through that. That's been recorded. So from a site plan standpoint, it's pretty minimal impact. We're providing stormwater management to meet all the ESD requirements. We're maintaining outfalls, so from a standpoint from storm drain, stormwater, everything's pretty compact.
This is kind of a micro question, but is there access to the lake walk from this site?
There is.
New configuration, so.
So if you, if you look at the site plans in front of you, you'll see there's a pathway that comes off of the deck here, and kind of works its way down to-
Boardwalk.
The boardwalk around the site, and then there's another exit off the deck that comes around, so you can connect to the front. So there is connectivity around the building.
And then net height change, the existing building, rubble?
I don't remember what the existing.
Yeah, I know we're going to the, a building height of 16 feet.
Increase.
Not sure what the existing height was.
It's an additional 16 feet.
Plus 16.
In some areas.
Right, the tower, the tower, things like that, okay. That's the highest point, that is a plus 16.
We talked about that.
All right.
Looks like from the drawings, the highest point, based on the elevation, is 368.
I don't know what the existing was. I was just curious what the increase was, Jim.
Where's the?
Okay.
All right, I'll turn it over to signage.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Sean Smith. I'm with Site Enhancement Services. Appreciate the time today. To go over, to give you an idea of what we are proposing for the signs, we looked at this, the previous condition, the Macaroni Grill, and we're basi, we are mimicking the same elevations that they utilize for signage. So we're not asking, what we're, the request for is the number of signs. We meet the intent of the ordinance by not exceeding 10% of any elevation with the particular signage that we're proposing. And in page two, kind of shows you a rundown of where we're proposing to put the signage here for this particular location. It's consistent with, there's an ingress egress here, where most of your traffic should come in off Rio. We're proposing to put a tenant panel here. And then majority of the sign is, signage is all facing the main entry point here, and then as well as the pedestrian walkway, which was consistent with what Macaroni Grill had. Then, I'll get into these kegmen here in a minute.
So you don't get, you don't have rights to or access to a monument or something at the Washingtonian Boulevard curb cut?
No, sir. That's, there is, there is an existing monument there, and it's occupied with Dick's Sporting Goods. Has that panel?
No. I'm talking about the, so it'd be essentially between you and the office building, that curb cut of Washingtonian.
It is occupied, but we did explore that. We don't have, we don't have access.
You don't have access, okay.
No, that, hence, I mean, if we would, we would, we would, we'd try to utilize that, obviously. But if you notice here, what we're proposing is, with the, we even with the kegmen here, we have, we're occupying 1.03% of the side area. So our intention isn't to have maximum signage, and it just doesn't fit with this particular architecture with our sign plans. Not that we want to do it anyways, but that's what we're proposing. I do have an exhibit for the kegmen that we recently installed. I know we had a brief in here that showed you, it was still in the crate.
I just don't know why they're walking away from the door and not toward it.
Well, that's interesting you say that. I think, because this is actually the, if I'm, if I am correct, this is the area that the brewery towards, sort of takes place. So they're walking to the docks, or the entry point, to drop in the beverages.
Okay.
But I do have some exhibits for these kegmen to give, I know we showed you he- Pardon me.
So Caroline, while he's pulling that up, does this count as icon sign approval? Because it doesn't really say that in the-
Yeah, the icon signs in the Washingtonian Development are already, have already been approved as part of their sign package, so you don't need to address it as an icon sign.
Okay.
So, but we, the staff recommended that we treat it as a sign in terms of square footage. So it needs your approval because it's a second sign on that building, but not because it's an icon sign.
It's strictly a quantity question, not an area or an icon question, okay.
Yeah, that's, you hit it nail on the head. It's that, we're here for quantity, not the number, I mean, we're here for the number of signs, not the-
Square footage.
Square footage of the signs. But as you'll notice here, it is, I only had photo, I only, I didn't get this in time. But the illumination of the sign is behind the keg, and that's what, that's the intent of it. And here's one where, if I can approach, you see, we have one where we've installed it, and this is mimicking what this particular location would be. It's going to be towards, it's going to be on the building itself, out of the pedestrian walkways, and it's more for an architectural effect. So I can go through the entire sign package, or, I mean, like-
Is there any questions? We had a pretty good layout in the packet. Did you guys have any questions?
No. Not me, I'm sorry.
Just speaking of me.
Yeah, it all looked really well developed. I don't know if there's any mystery to what's being proposed. I guess what I should ask, just for the record, is because it's a waiver, it's a waiver, right?
Sign adjustment.
Adjustment, excuse me. The justification for the adjustment, if you'll just sort of state in simple terms what, why would it's in the applicant, but.
We do, which, we do not, the science does not exceed 10% of the total square footage of the facade, which the sign is attached to. We are granting this adjustment will not allow for significant privileges.
Oh, I know, I'm just asking why. Why would you need more numbers, the increased number of signs? I may help you out here, because what I'm really reading into this is we've got a building that's within both a pedestrian and a vehicular context, and they sort of both work to serve one or the other better. There's more of a, I think there's a better vehicular context for one of the signs, and you have to look across the lake to see it. So I think there's some good justification for our discussion, but I just wanted you to have the opportunity to explain what your case was again for your adjustment.
Sure, absolutely. We're proposing the additional wall signs for vehicular traffic. That's what, down Washingtonian Boulevard and Rio Boulevard for vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic. What's unique about this particular location and the development here, you have cross-axis easements, you have multiple use, mixed-use development here, you have destination points, and you have pedestrian walkways. What we're proposing is this particular signage package meets all those needs for the vehicular traffic that's traveling through the area to make, that gives them advanced notifications to the ingress egress points. We do not have an individual freestanding sign, so typically a freestanding sign would direct traffic to the entry of the property. That's what a freestanding signs function is. What we're proposing is to have some additional signage to allow us to direct the traffic in a safe manner, and access and vacate the area safely and efficiently, and then also allow pedestrians, as they're walking, to not come across the roads, come through the parking lots. It allows them where the ingress egresses are for the pedestrians as well. So that's why we're looking for some additional signage.
And that's why I asked about the monument, because that would have been logical, I think, on Washingtonian Boulevard, but you don't have access to that, so it's okay. Very good. Any other questions?
All right, ma'am.
Okay. Is anyone in the audience here to comment on this application? I have to say that for the record. And seeing no one, Caroline, please, if you would do the recommendations.
Sure. So there'll actually be two, two recommendations, two motions. And I will note that there was one condition that has since been satisfied. The WSSC agreement has been recorded, so that is no longer a condition.
I'm just curious, what is that for? What is the easement, or what is the?
The deck in the rear is being built over, on top of a WSSC easement. So in order for them to be able to build within their easement, they needed, they need an agreement with WSSC permission to do that. And I know Joe's Crab Shack has done something similar, so this would be the second one along that easement.
Right, right. Okay, thanks.
So staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant AFP-7794-2017 Amendment to Final Site Plan, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-168 and 24-172A of the City Code, with no conditions.
You want to do the second one also, just to-
Sure. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant sign adjustments for sign C, south elevation, E, east elevation, and H on the west elevation, finding them in conformance with Section 24-213AF of the City zoning ordinance, also with no conditions.
Great, thanks. Any, any questions on the recommendation?
None recommendations. And I noticed that there's no impact to parking, so that's good.
No.
Okay. Hopefully, there'll be more people wanting to park.
Exactly.
Any questions on the motion? Okay. So if I open a discussion on the first motion, actual approval of the site plan, I think, obviously, use is consistent, footprint is consistent, the height is a little bit higher, but that's, it's also consistent with the caliber of building and business that's going in there. So I think it's all very reasonable. I don't see any downside, any questions or comments on the, on the, on the site in, in the site plan, I don't, I don't have any concerns. I'm still, I think the concerns of a number of us talked about at the, at the last hearing, in regards to the metal mesh on the tower, I think still, for me personally, still exists. It's helpful to see the material sample, but from having done my fair share of these, the appearance of transparency is sort of inversely proportional to how far away you're viewing these. So this screen, if you're 200, 300 yards away with a two-inch spacing, sure, will achieve the design goals we're all talking about, about having sort of a semi-transparent look while still screening the stuff behind it. The problem we have here is twofold, in my, in my opinion. One is, you've got 40-foot, a 40-foot tower of this mesh on two primary facades of the building, and you have people who are going to be walking right up next to it. So for anybody walking up that walkway towards, from the, from the lakeside up to the deck, approaching from that facade, the closer you get to it, it's going to disappear, and it's almost not going to be there. I think the material itself is a good choice. My recommendation is, and there's dozens and dozens of different examples of similar sort of mesh screens that use the exact same thing, just with a slightly tighter spacing. I think if you go to a, like a one-inch by one-inch spacing, I think it will much more closely align with sort of what you're describing here. I mean, that is my one concern, that this is going to appear sort of very, very, very transparent, and all of the back-of-house air conditioning units, and back-of-house stairs and dumpsters are going to be more visible than we think they are. My proxy for this was, and I was, I was thinking about that, I think, two things. I think there's a function of lighting that's going to make it read more or less, or how much or how the lighting is actually coming from within the tower, which we really didn't get into, but that's, that's going to have a pretty profound impact on how it reads, I think.
At night.
Even in the daytime. If it's in shadow, but there's still some lighting in there, it'll, it'll make things appear, right? But the other is, my proxy for the mesh itself was chain link on like a backstop, you know, and, and I, I don't know if that's the effect you want or not. I mean, I'm not, obviously, that's on a diagram, it's a different pattern, but in terms of, you know, how transparent it is, that's kind of the same density of wire to, wire to spacing. You know, it's kind of an industrial look, but that's cool too. So I, you know, I don't know if that's, I guess we're looking for a more objective way to say, okay or not. I mean, it's sort of a look and a feel that they're after, and if we have that kind of comparison, if you guys, I don't know what your, what your vision is, if that's what you had in mind, or do you, you know, do you do this everywhere?
It is to have that transparency, and when you, that industrial look, that modern look of architecture, and then that being able to see what's going on. So, but then again, have it a bit opaque, so.
And I think that, I think that look is 100% appropriate.
Right.
I think we're not critiquing the design idea. I think the concern here is that on, as you move the slider between completely opaque and completely transparent, I think our concern, or my concern, is that where we have it now with the two-inch grid on that mesh is just a little bit too far to the two-transparent.
Oh, I see. You think it's too transparent.
I think it's too transparent. I think, I think, just tightening up the spacing, exact same material, exact same look, just tightening up the spacing will get it a little bit closer to that semi-screen, semi-transparent look. I mean, that's just, from looking at the photos and looking at, I think the renderings that you showed, the rendered elevations are showing something that looks good. I don't think that drives what we're going to get with such a wide space. That's a concern. It's the exact same material, you can order the exact same stuff with a one-by-one. instead of a two-by-two and I think, personally, I think you'd be gold.
I have a more probity and concern, and that is two inches, you said backstop? What do kids do? They climb those backstops. You can put your foot through those. I mean, two inches is, is substantial, so that someone could actually conceivably scale that. Is that a problem?
Yeah. I, I've, I've researched the material and to the commissioner's point, they make it in other, there's two-by-two, there's one and a half, one and three-quarters, one as far as in the square, so we'd be more unhappy to, you know, to look at that if, if, if need be, you know, for the commissioners, for the commission.
If this was a small little screen wall around a dumpster, I'd say, okay, you know, fine, whatever. These are two humongous facade elements, humongous portions of the facade and I just, I think that warrants.
I'm intrigued by the possibility of climbing. Has that, has that been part of the discussion at all?
Well, I, my opinion, see, my opinion, my foot wouldn't fit in there, but, but then again, I, I understand your concerns about.
It's a great point.
There's always, there's always the chance, but like anything.
And that's why I brought it up as far as the, you know, I was, I was kind of, I mean, you, I, I was waiting for this discussion because I was thinking the same thing. I was like, is that going to be too wide that it won't? I mean, I, or my sons are a lot older now, but they would love to climb something like that. So I was just, I was just concerned about that kind of temptation.
I mean, and I'm honestly not sure this, this warrants a condition or any change in how we approve this. My suggestion would be when you start construction, get your contractor to build three of these panels and take them out there and sit them there and walk around the site and see how it looks.
We'd be glad to do that, yeah, yeah.
Before you buy all of it, just because.
We'd be glad to look into it and if there's, you know, if there's, if there's a concern, we definitely, you know, take, take a hard look at it.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion is I'm, we're all getting to the realm of sort of opinions and, and, you know, design opinion, so I don't want to, I don't want to burden you with some sort of condition or hold approval, but just a, a recommendation and a, a strong recommendation that you.
I also think it'd be worth, I, I didn't quite hear the answer, has this been used like this somewhere else? Have you used it or have you seen it used just like this?
This, this architecture is very new and we.
I mean, just the material, the material as a, as a form of infill?
I believe, from my, my personal knowledge, just as far as with, with the yardhouse and the architecture, this is so new, it's, it's designed here, we've got one other one in Chicago that's under construction, but the netting's not up yet, or else I would have had pictures. But, and that's it, those are the only two places that I know of it so far.
And that, that's kind of what I was getting at when I asked the question, have you seen this at a huge scale?
I tried, I, I even, I, I even tried to, I contacted the company, okay, and said, do you have any pictures? And, I mean, I called their national, their corporate office, I couldn't get any as far as in an architectural rendering, because the idea is using this, this metal mesh for this. So I think it's, I think it's an innovative, new way that they're using mesh for architecturally speaking and it's so new, there's, I can't find a building yet.
So Phil and Commissioner, I think, I think let's, my proposal, let's encourage that, that kind of exploration, doing something sort of fresh and new and trying this out. I think if, if you can find a way, I think Phil suggested maybe a test panel, sample panel somewhere along the way during construction, maybe see it at scale, maybe hoist it up a little high and see if it really reads the way you think it is. A little bit more serious discussion about whether the, the spacing, the module either encourages or discourages potentially climbing. I mean, I think those are all realistic concerns.
I can, I can share with you or share with staff to share with you, there, we've looked at similar products in my day job on numerous, numerous buildings and there are a number of manufacturers, some of whom I just stole samples out of our office tape. There are a number of manufacturers that have images of varying degrees of density, it may not be your exact product, but just for a sort of gut check of, of what it looks like, there's some really good manufacturers that have examples of different densities on garages, on screen walls that can give you a better idea of what it's going to look like.
And it sounds like the Chicago project is probably a bit ahead of yours?
I, yes, it is. It's under construction, but it's not up yet, but when it is installed, I will get pictures.
Well, it sounds like you'll have the opportunity to test that before you begin construction yourself.
Yes, on this one, that one's far enough ahead to where we'll, we'll know what the, we'll know what it looks like. All right, and I will share the commission's concerns with the, with the design team.
Yeah, and I think some, because it's a new application, I think something about the lighting is going to, going to inform that also. I'm not sure what exactly, but there's a, if you do glancing light on the outside, it's going to focus you on the plane and not what's beyond. Pump up the light inside, it's going to make whatever happens inside, you know, read, read a little better. I'm not sure what your scheme is for the building lighting itself, but I think that's part of the equation somehow. Begin to research that a bit.
Are we looking also at the landscaping yet or is that something that's down the road?
Do you have a question?
I just, I mean.
No, that's fine.
It's just an idea that as far as the screening goes, having IV growing up through the screen to give it more definition, to allow it to stand out a little bit more, because there's very little color right now, it's gray and black and, you know, wrought iron. If you can put some greenery around that particular screening over the next few years, it would really, I think, enhance the, the look, just, just a suggestion. We've seen that in some of the parking, some parking facilities, where they actually put that screening up and then they put on IV or some, some form of greenery and it really does make the, the building or the structure a lot more.
Of course, it'll make it more opaque, then, then there's the visibility piece that I think they're after.
But the light would come out, I mean, it could conceivably, it doesn't have to be the entire height, but anyway.
There's, there's actually a tree in front of it, according to the, if you look at the rendered site plan.
Okay. I think, I think the main takeaway here is there's a couple dozen different ways to tweak the design without changing the design to, to adjust this, to keep the exact same architecture.
So tonight's approval for final site plan or amendment to final site plan is going to be for the architecture as presented.
Yes.
We have a choice to put a condition in to come back with all the materials or just leave it in the record that in the course of finishing up your sample panel test panels, you can, you can adjust as necessary to get the effect you're after. What is the commission's recommendation?
I like, I like your, your ladder. I don't think that we need to.
We don't want it to be a ladder.
Ladder, not ladder, ladder.
Okay. Are, are any concerns? Okay, so we'll leave it in the record as discussion for kind of final, final material selection, give you that latitude.
Yeah.
If that's okay with you. And leave, leave it conditionless, is that?
Yes, and just since we're leaving it in the record, based on the drawings and elevations, you're showing your railing panel infills around the deck being the exact same material as the, the metal mesh in the tower. I don't think they necessarily have to be the exact same spacing, I don't think there's any issue with the railing panels being two-by-two. So just, just in the realm of making sure the record's clear, there's no, there's no issue from our standpoint or my standpoint, having the two of them be different spacings.
Yeah, especially the railing, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of pushing sort of lateral forces there you might not see on the others, so see what's, see what's most kick-proof.
Kick and kick.
All right, is there any other discussion on the recommendations? All right, then is there a motion, please, on the first part of the approval, which is for the amended amendment to final site plan?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff reports, findings and recommendations, grant amendment to final plan to AFP 7794-2017, finding it in compliance with Section 24-168 and 24-172A of the City Code with no conditions.
Second.
So moving second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That takes us to the second, a, a part of the approval, which is for the sign adjustment. And I think we have in the record discussion about justifying that. Any, any other concerns? Okay, is there a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, staff report, findings and recommendations, grant sign adjustments for sign C, south elevation E, east elevation and H, west elevation, finding them in conformance with Section 24-213A, Paragraph F of the city zoning ordinance with zero conditions.
Second.
Moving second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck.
Thank you.
Great looking building.
Looking forward to seeing the project.
Yes, very excited, thank you.
You're welcome to give us worship.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to, from the commission, Phil, may I start with you tonight?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, Greg?
Nope.
Danny?
It's just that in the area, it's great to see some redevelopment. I think it's going to be exciting to see that space being where you love. Yeah.
Ms. Alley?
Anything in the spring coming up with the continuation of the lecture series or?
Yes, actually, we're working, we're developing two scenarios and seeing which one gets there sooner. For the April, we, our next lecture is April 17th and we are separating that, we were initially going to separate that time for our consultant to provide the results of their strategic plan study that they're doing with the Main Street. However, we have work in rescheduling, it looks like their results will be ready for our June lecture. So we have beginning engaging our, one of our programs with the Kentland Community Foundation, which is called The Village, and so we're looking at exploring possibilities in which our community members can age in place. I think that's a big consideration for people within most communities, that they want to stay attached, they want to stay connected with the places, but their homes are no longer able, they have different accessibility issues and all of those things. So we're engaging a couple of experts in the field about aging in place and so we're probably going to be working on a panel in partnership with The Village for that.
Sounds good.
Good.
All right, I don't have anything tonight. Where to next? Greg?
Yeah, so as you may remember, last month, we, staff came for you about reopening the record for indefinitely for SDP 7712-2017, which was the Kentland Square infill sites, which are the pad sites, the pad sites. We, during the January 16, 2018 Mayor's and Council meeting, obviously there was a policy discussion, during the policy discussion, questions were raised about revisions to the layout of the drive-through for site E. And as a result, again, the council held, their opens, records were opened indefinitely as well to allow the applicant additional time to provide additional information to the record about the redesign. We have now received that additional redesign, so staff is, before you're just looking to close the record for that meeting or now, we are proposing March 9th with anticipated recommendations of the Mayor and City Council at your March 21st meeting.
Okay, so with a redesign, though, we don't have the opportunity to go back to the public or don't?
Well, the information has been uploaded to our website, so it is a record, exhibit 61, so you can see it on the city webpage now or come to the city hall and we can provide you a copy or show you where it is on the website there as well. So it is available for the public to review.
Okay.
And then it would be presented to you as well as a recommendation.
That's fine, I just wanted to think about it. So we, we had the recommendation that they redesigned the drive-through, the solution for that, a proposed solution for that, though, isn't in, this process isn't in place for anybody to comment on that solution or that, that revision?
The, the record is still open, so the record, your record will be open until the March 9th, yeah.
If it's a practical matter, until it kind of comes up on an agenda, it's hard for people to recognize that it's, it's time to look at it and consider it. So that's, I'm just sort of thinking a lot in a way that, but that's okay, if that's, if staff feels that's the best, best approach, but.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's available and that's why we, we specifically said, well, you need to put it, we need to accept it from the applicant so that people can look at it and, and review it and send comment in.
And this is really just a revision to the SDP?
It's a revision to.
So it's our recommendation to Mayor and Council about the revision?
Right.
They'll come back for final site plan or, or it could be encumbered by conditions at the final, at the SDP approval, things like that.
Right.
Okay.
And do you remember, after your recommendation, the council's record will still be open as well, so any testimony that happens after your, your recommendation would be included in their record.
Good, all right. Thanks for that clarification. So you're looking for a motion tonight to close the record?
Yes, to close the record, March 9th, 2018, again, with anticipated Mayor and City Council recommendation on March 21st, 2018.
On SDP number again?
7712-2017.
Okay, that way we can get a sub move from the commissioners.
Should be, it's on your.
Can I, can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we.
Oh, he's doing the whole thing. I was trying to give you a sub move.
Well, you know.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Recommend closing the planning commission record on March 9th, 2018 on SDP 7712-2017. Second.
So moving second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Greg. What else we got?
Just another reminder, the joint work session for the road typologies, which is the road code amendment to the city code that staff's working on currently, that is scheduled for Monday, March 26.
Okay. Do they have the polling out on that? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
All right. Trudy, anything tonight?
I just wanted to say that the mayor and city council will be having their annual planning retreat next Monday at 6:00 PM at Casey Community Center and that's where they discuss the strategic directions for the year.
All right. Did you, is the proposed planning objectives or, I guess, strategic direction points, whatever, whatever they're called, for the planning group, is that on there now or there, there's, yeah? It's on the website for review, the draft or the proposed?
It will be tomorrow, by tomorrow evening.
Okay.